Thank you, Claire. I'm going to kick off now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clare. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Right. Good evening and please may I welcome everyone to this virtual city council Winchester City Council meeting of the West of Waterlooville Forum. The time is 6pm on Tuesday, the 8th of March 2022. My name is councillor Angela Clare, chairperson of the forum. There are a few housekeeping reminders to run through. First of all, please may I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your camera is turned off whilst you are not addressing the meeting, as this will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. Please may I also advise that this meeting is being livestreamed to the council's YouTube channel where the recording can also be found next to the meeting's details during the meeting. Members and officers where appropriate for each item, may I ask that you please indicate that you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or explanation by raising your hand, using the hand icon on your screen and I will invite you to then speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, therefore I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible, please. And finally, if I may say, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me by raising your hand again and also with the hand icon on your screen? And I will announce to everybody at the meeting that you are to leave. So may I then please ask the senior democratic services officer to undertake a roll call of members of the forum to confirm, please, Claire, who is present this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. If I can please ask you to unmute your microphone to confirm your attendance, please. So I have obviously councillor Clare.
Thank you, yes.
Councillor Brooke, I have apologies for tonight. Councillor Cutler?
I'm present but only for half an hour because I have to attend the Audit and Governance Committee at half past six.
Noted. Thank you very much, councillor Cutler. Councillor Reed, I understand he was having some difficulties joining, so hopefully he'll be with us shortly. And from Havant Borough Council.
Apologies for interrupting. I've had another call from councillor Reed. Claire, could you send him a link to his personal email address?
Right, we'll try and get that to him, councillor Crichton. Yeah, I shall do so after I've done the roll call here. So Havant Borough Council councillors, so I have councillor Milne. I haven't actually seen councillor Milne present at the moment, but she has advised me that she will be present. Councillor Jenner. Again, similarly, I've not heard from councillor Jenner. But I do believe councillor Robinson, I believe you're present.
Yes, I'm present.
Thank you. And councillor Wade?
Yes, I'm present. If I leave early, I'm going to bed.
Noted. Thank you very much. And Hampshire County councillors, councillor Hughes. I've not received apologies from councillor Hughes, so and he's not actually present at the moment in the meeting, but councillor Stalard.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you very much, councillor Stalard. And from the parish of council of Newlands, I have councillor Berry.
Yes, present.
Thank you. And councillor Crichton.
Present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. And I see councillor Milne. Welcome.
Councillor Milne, yes, is now present.
Also, Claire, I ask you to confirm the names of the officers this evening, please.
Of course. Thank you, Chair. So the officers present tonight, I have Dawn Ady, the Strategic Director for Winchester City Council, Julie Pinnock, the Service Lead for Built Environment for Winchester City Council, Steve Lincoln, the Service Lead for Community for Winchester City Council, Rose Lister, the Principal Plan Officer for Winchester City Council, and Lewis Oliver from Havant Borough Council. Thank you very much.
Lovely. Thank you. I know you said some apologies, but do you have any more, please, Claire, for absence?
Yes, I do. So apologies for absence has been received from councillor Brooke, as previously advised, from Mark Maitland, the Community Officer for Winchester City Council, Jenny Upstall from Granger PLC, and from Louise Weaver and Steve Weaver from Havant Borough Council. Thank you very much.
Most kind. Thank you so much.
Chairman, apologies. May I also offer apologies from Kevin Mitchell of Taylor Wimpy, who has contacted me, wasn't able to get through to you.
Thank you, David. Appreciated. So moving on declarations of interest. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business transacted? If so, could you please use the chat function now to indicate and I will invite you to speak?
That's none, Chair.
No. Thank you so much. So moving on to item three minutes. The minutes are on pages seven to 14 of the agenda pack, ladies and gentlemen. It is recommended that the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 2nd of November 2021 be approved as a true and accurate record. Should no member object? If you do, members, if you would have an objection or correction, if you could unmute your microphone now, that would be fine and we can see if you have objections or anything. Is there anybody? David, I've got a feeling you might need to talk on this. Do you, sir?
Apologies. Could just repeat that. I've just had another call from councillor Reed who's still unable to get into the meeting and is asking for assistance from anybody who can do, unable to join.
Thank you, David. Matthew, could you possibly, if you're there, help the gentlemen out?
Sorry, the link has been sent to councillor Reed's personal email. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, it's councillor Stalard speaking. If councillor Reed has that much difficulty, tell him to jump in his car and come up to my house and share my screen.
Thank you, councillor Stalard.
Could you do that, Claire, just in case?
Yeah, we'll email. Thank you.
Right, going back to the minutes. Anybody have any corrections or objections, please? Anybody? I don't see any objections, Claire, do you?
No, no hands raised, Chair.
Okay, that's fine. So may I pass these as a true record of from the last meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Is that, oh, here's councillor Reed. Welcome, sir. I can see you there.
Councillor Reed, thank you very much. In the meeting.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've gone in the meeting, but I can't get into the minutes because they're on a different machine. I can't use this machine for both things.
No. Have you seen them? You've obviously read them, councillor Reed, so I will ask, did you have any corrections or queries for them?
Well, I have some queries, but they're marked up on the other screen.
Oh, okay, sir. Oh, right.
Whatever this is, can it be transferred to my private email address?
What, the?
This has come through on my Winchester email address.
I thought Claire did that for you, didn't you, Claire?
We sent the link to the meeting through to your personal email address.
We did. It failed three times and so did Neil's.
Well, Mike, if you have queries and objections, you're not sure what they are about the last lot of minutes, so I'm not sure if I should sign these off, Claire, to be honest with you.
I'm totally blind.
You can look at them, Mike.
How?
It depends if it's on your iPad, is it?
They're on my iPad that I'm talking to you on now.
Yeah, but you can switch between them. You don't actually need to see the team's screen. You can have a look. That's what I've got to do for this meeting.
If you go back to your emails, councillor Reed, you can come out. I mean, we know you're there, but you can come out and have a look.
Will that not cut, will that not cut me off?
No.
No, no, not at all, sir. Not at all.
Okay.
It's open mod.gov.
So councillor Reed, can I just clarify, were the points that you're raising on the minutes, were they corrections to the minutes or were they notes and matters arising from the minutes?
Where are matters arising from?
Okay, so there's no change to the minutes per se then?
No.
Oh, are you going to accept them then?
Yeah.
Are you there? Can you find them, councillor Reed?
I'm there. I'm just trying to see if I can get to them. Yeah, I've got them.
Right, sir. Over to you then. If you can let us know, that would be lovely.
Well, I've got no problems with the, it's actually on the WWF 118, which I've got a question on.
Yeah.
Obviously not what you're doing at the moment.
Yeah. Oh. That's what we're doing later?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, right. So is it okay if I say I can sign the minutes off then?
I've got no problem.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, councillor Reed. Appreciated. Item four, public participation. I have received no requests from anyone wishing to speak under public participation. So I'm going to move straight into the Arts Programme Update Report, number WWF 118. And I know councillor Cutler has to disappear because he has another, he has the audit meeting. Councillor Cutler, I just wondered before Steve Lincoln, our officer, introduces it, if you would like to say anything, so, you know, because I know you have to dash off, so.
Thank you, Chair. Well, having chaired the arts panel since 2019, but actually the last meeting was September 2020. Pandemic meant it was very difficult to get much done, but I think we had previously reported that I had concerns about the governance and the escalating costs, particularly to Wayward, and the fact that the money was kept in Granger's hands. And that was no reflection on Granger, but it just meant that there was no democratic sort of control of that money. And given that a previous arts project had been a bit of a failure, we felt on the arts panel that it was important that the money came back in-house on this and that we reassessed particularly the Boating Lake project, which appeared to be looking as if it would consume all the funds, which didn't quite seem to be appropriate. So since September 20, things had gone, as I say, partly because of the pandemic, had gone quiet. The officer administering the arts panel has left the council and so recently having teamed up with Steve Lincoln and trying to reset how we approach the arts panel. This paper describes where we are at this point and is for the forum to note. Steve probably will be able to go into more detail on it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Chair, you're on mute.
You are quite correct. I apologize. Thank you, councillor Cutler. Appreciated. Steve, Mr Lincoln, may I ask you then to, I'm going to hand over to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, councillor Cutler has set the foundations nicely. Obviously, the report's in front of members. I wasn't intending to sort of go through it in huge amounts of detail, all the details there. I suppose what I really wanted to say is sort of picking up from where councillor Cutler left off. I think the report, we're not under any illusions that the report's trying to provide all the answers here. I think this kind of came from a conversation that officers had with officers from Granger, recognizing that the process had stalled somewhat and that there was really just a need to kind of pick it up, review where we'd got to, give it some impetus and get things started again. Obviously, the timing of the the forum sort of committee meeting schedule meant that this was an opportune moment to come back and sort of just report what conversations we had up until this point. There'll need to be conversations going on beyond this point and clearly we can report back further the next time that the forum meets. But obviously what we wanted to do is start looking to move things forward positively. So as set out in the report and councillor Cutler just touched on some of the projects that had been kind of on the agenda and looking to proceed previously. The view around the table from officers from the council and from Granger was that the Gateway Project clearly moved forward substantially, but for various reasons, as set out in the report, didn't reach a successful conclusion. But given the work that has already been done on that, it was felt that what we should do is pick that back up and look at a way to try and to really just bring that to a satisfactory conclusion so that the project can can still meet the aims that were set out for that particular installation, but in a successful way. So that's the intention is that that would be the next step on that one. Councillor Cutler's already mentioned in terms of the Boating Lake, how the expected cost of that had escalated considerably. So the view again around the table was that what needs to happen is we really need to sort of step back, review in more depth where that project had got to, how it had got to where it, to that point, what the costs were likely to be. And I guess seriously reconsider whether that is a piece of work and an installation, a project that should continue onwards. Just to highlight, and hopefully the report does this, but just to highlight for our colleagues, particularly from the parish council, there was a recognition around the table that it's really important that the parish council is part of those conversations and that they need to be part of that discussion. So that absolutely will happen, councillors Crichton, councillor Berry. That will absolutely happen going forward and, you know, we don't intend to to sort of try and take things forward without you guys being involved in the conversation. And then really, I suppose I just wanted to mention what councillor Cutler touched on around the sort of management of the programme. It has passed through a couple of different hands over the sort of fairly prolonged period that the work's been ongoing. The view around the table again was that probably the city council is the right place for that responsibility to sit in terms of that sort of overall governance and oversight of the programme. The challenge we have is that at the moment, there's no there's no capacity, there's no officer post in place who really has either the capacity or the position to pick this up and run with it. So again, we don't quite have the answers to that yet. We acknowledge that it should be the city council that does it. We need to consider how best that might be achieved. There were some different options considered. One of those that was considered was the possibility of using some of the remaining budget to meet the cost of somebody who would then oversee the programme. We haven't really done any great thinking in detail about that, but again, I think that's a conversation that we need to have in the coming weeks with the key stakeholders to just kind of agree how best to do it. As things currently stand, there isn't anybody in place who can pick this work up. So until we get that resolved, the work really won't pick up substantially and really start moving forward, which is clearly something we all want to do. So I think the key first step is going to be to speak with colleagues from maybe the community here at Havant, from Granger and the parish council and just try and work out how we're going to create the resource to really have proper oversight of this. And then once we've got that in place, the report sort of sets out the how we might address each of those projects. And then I think, depending on the view that's taken on the Boating Lake project, I think we would want to take a step back, have a look at the development as a whole and just kind of maybe try and agree agree an approach for really rolling out the rest of the programme. Agree some key principles really for how best to do that. So so that's kind of where we're at, I think, Chair. I think that summarizes the position that we're at. We wanted to update the committee and just the forum and just sort of set out really where we see things going over the next month or two. Happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Appreciated. So forum members, if you wish to ask any questions of Steve, if you would raise your hands, we can, right, councillor Stalard, I can see you there. So over to you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Steve, for your very detailed report. I found it very, very interesting to read. And I'm not at all unsympathetic with the problems that, you know, the city council faces. But at the same time, I am very concerned to learn that yet again the Boating Lake project is going to be either put back, reviewed, or may not now even take place at all, depending on the conversations that you have with parish council. That saddens me considerably because, you know, over the years, because of inflation, because of COVID, because of all kinds of different things, and costs have been rising, we've had to modify the the cultural aspect, the things that we were planning to put in place. And that saddens me because it is a lovely estate, it's beautifully set out if you walk around there. And I'm sure that the people who live there appreciate it. I just wondered, it's a question I'm asking. Given that the city council will be receiving considerable amounts of S106 money for this, cannot some of that money be ploughed back into this arts project to make things like the Boating Lake an economically feasible project?
Steve, do you want to tell you that?
Yeah, I can try. I mean, the section 106 included a sum from Granger of half a million pounds towards the cost of this arts programme. And there was some money in the section 106 for Taylor Wimpy, most of which has already been used and utilized. And the report kind of sets out in broad terms what those figures were. I mean, that's the only money which is available for the delivery of this programme. And I mean, that is a pretty substantial sum. I mean, I have to say, I've sort of picked up this report, but we're going forward, we'll be working very much with the council's Service Lead for Economy, who's Andrew Gostelo, who takes the kind of broader overview of arts and culture within the council. So it's not my area of expertise particularly. But I mean, that is a reasonably substantial sum. And there's no other money within the 106 which is set aside specifically for this purpose. So at this moment in time, that's the sort of sum that's available. And I think, again, we as the report sets out, we need to look in detail about the proposals and and really the review reset is really just intended to try and make sure that the best possible use is made of that. At this stage, it's not there's no view been taken that the Boating Lake, you know, should or shouldn't happen. It's very much still on the table. But I think we just felt it was something that was worth doing. As councillor Cutler set out, as things currently stand, the Boating Lake proposal would would pretty much take up all of the money that's left. And it's really just a question of reviewing whether that's the best and most effective way to kind of meet the broader arts programme aims across the whole development or whether an alternative approach might be better. So.
Can I ask, Steve, interrupting, can you give me a timeframe from this review that might take place?
Hard to do that. It would certainly be, the reason it's hard to do that is because we really need to have some have some resource in place to lead this piece of work. As I mentioned, there's not anyone available, there's no capacity available to actually undertake that at the moment. There isn't a post, there's no post who directly sort of delivers and undertakes art and culture projects. It sits broadly within the economy team. As I say, one of the suggestions, and I think it's something that we need to take away and discuss with all the stakeholders, is whether some of that remaining budget could be used for that. It's still a fairly substantial amount that's left there. And, you know, a view that's often taken of these kind of, these programmes is that the total programme sum includes the sum that's, you know, the resource that's required to actually deliver the programme effectively.
Okay. Yeah, Madam Chairman, the point I'm trying to make is, and I'm sure Neil will come back on this. We don't want this project to fall between the cracks and dis.
No, I agree with you. And I think councillor Cutler raised his hand. So did he just want to come in, councillor Cutler?
I mean, just briefly, I apologize to the forum that the fact that that things had gone into abeyance. Things had been rather hectic over the last couple of years and but my real concern was that the boat and the whole arts panel at the time concern was that the boat, because there was there were consultants that were spending money and that had suddenly shifted from £180,000 to close on £400,000 without any sum for maintenance. So we needed to revisit it. I'll make a guarantee that we'll get on with this now. I mean, Jenny Upstall at Granger has volunteered to take a significant role in there. And I think that can be, can be very, very useful. The parish council can, you know, will have a significant role here. And we need to kickstart things. It's been the last couple of months that Steve's become involved and we've gone back and looked at everything to bring this paper to you. If, you know, having heard the discussion here, we'll go away and try and kickstart things this as soon as possible. And I quite understand, Patricia, you know, it is frustrating because it's the circle entrance feature that's been there for years. But there are one or two practicalities that great artistic ideas seem to have you know, turn out to be very, very impractical. And really, it is this whole oak theme, which was a great idea eight, 10 years ago, but growing oak trees around that ring doesn't work. The oak sculpture for the Boating Lake may not be, you know, maybe the expensive part of it. We need to review all that to, you know, to perhaps thematically look at it slightly different from that forest of beer shipbuilding oak theme that sort of came through early on in the in the arts programme. And just work out what the practicality is from that sort of forest theme, which I still think is valid, but it may not be oak trees because it wasn't all oak trees. It was, it include quite a lot of other biodiversity as well. And maybe that's, that's the shift of the theme we need to have. All that's up in the air and all that needs talking. I'm afraid I've got to go, but I hope you have a constructive discussion.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Councillor Stalard, yes, the cost did escalate, but please can I assure you that we're not just going to ignore it and let it die? We will review it and we will work with Jenny Upstall and the parish council. So please, can you, we will get on with it, Patricia. I promise you, we won't just let it die.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Claire, do I have, no, yes?
Yep, it's councillor Crichton, then councillor Berry. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Crichton, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. I just appreciate, first of all, the comments councillor Stalard has made. And I do appreciate the support she's getting for this. This has been a long project and there were a lot of promises made earlier on about what we were going to provide. And I'm afraid it is sort of petering out at the moment. And I do welcome the commitment to relook at this project. But the starting point from it is that there are two pieces of this. One is the Taurus, the ring which is now up at Milk Lane. My understanding is that we are looking at alternative planting for that and I would really like to see that go ahead. I think it's a particularly good project. But more to the point, the Boating Lake and the Grow Your Boat project got a lot of interest and a lot of support when it was promoted. I appreciate that costs have gone up on this. But what I would ask is, can we work it backwards? In other words, can we have a look at that project and try and work out exactly what it would cost to implement it? We've got all the factors for it. We have a water supply. We've got power supply locally. We know what needs to go into it. Now, we know there's only so much money left in the pot, but there are about eight or more phases of the development still to come ahead. And I can see no reason why part of the section 106 agreements with each of those developers as they come in could not include a contribution towards further monies towards the arts project because it's going to be a benefit to all residents within the development. So could we try, take it from that point of view? This is my personal view and I think it's that of the parish council. And I'm quite happy to discuss it. We'll have a full council meeting this week. But if we can arrange another meeting of the arts panel as soon as possible, whether it's a full one or informal one, just simply to agree strategy, that would be very helpful to know exactly where we're going.
But may I say, David, I completely agree with you. And Steve, can I please say that, yes, if we could arrange a meeting of the arts panel ASAP to go through this, I would very much appreciate it. Steve? He's gone. Is that all right, Steve? Yes, he's putting his thumb up, David, so I rest it, leave it with me, sir. And I'll work with Steve and we'll get a meeting of the arts panel ASAP.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councillor Berry? Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you for everybody who's put their viewpoint.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you for everybody who's put their view point across this. What I'm worried about is there's lack of communication about this to the parish council. There's lack of communication to the residents of Newlands about it. And it's a shame, you know, if this boating lake doesn't go ahead, because, you know, that would be helpful for. Newlands Parish Council and the residents and also bringing more people into Waterlooville.
Yeah.
And, um, my concern is if the boating lake doesn't go ahead. What's going to happen to the money and what's going to happen to the boating lake? Because there's some work needs to be done on that boating li- or the lake. To make it look more attractive for people to walk around.
Yeah.
So that's my point.
Yeah, thank you councillor Berry. Steve, did you want to come in on that?
Um, yeah, only really to say, um, I mean, in terms of communication, I think, you know, we have, we have to put hands up and say at this point, there's not really been anything to communicate. I think what the report tries to reflect on is the fact that the work, the work on the programme paused. Probably best part of a couple of years ago now, maybe eighteen months ago, with lots of things going on in the world and. And, and different things happening and, and nothing really progressed. So, so this report is really just saying, look, what we need to do is get the right people together around the table, talk about it and consider the right way forward. Absolutely communicating that we, a- as, as we just sort of discussed with councillor Crichton, getting the parish council around the table with us is a key part of that. And then clearly, once we have a, a clear idea what the strategy, for want of a better phrase, is going forward, then we need to communicate and let people know of that. I mean, obviously this is a public meeting, public agenda. So in some ways, we, we've done that to, to a small extent with publica- publication of this report. Um, in terms of future of the, the boating lake, I, I think, you know, again, wanted to just reiterate that. There's no decision at this point that it shouldn't happen. I think what we wanted to do is just highlight the fact that we felt it was, it was necessary to sort of give some serious thought to that. Think councillor Crichton's comment about, you know, starting with the end point and working our way back is a good one. Um, and, and really, you know, ultimately this is all just about, uh, reaching agreement amongst all the right people. As to what's the best way to use this money. Absolutely what will happen is the money that's set aside for this arts programme will be used to deliver an arts programme. It's just what exactly that arts programme looks like. If, if, you know, if the, if the sort of the consensus view is that the boating lake is the right way. Um, then obviously that can be carried on and, and can be delivered in the best way possible. If it's felt that the, the money could be, could be utilised in a better way across the whole development. Then, you know, then a different approach and strategy can be formulated. So it's really just a case of stepping back, taking a moment and reviewing what's the best way to use that money. But the money is absolutely there. It's ring fenced for that purpose. It's set aside for that purpose in the one O six agreement. Um, and, and that's what the, um, the arts panel in, in, in its future, guys, will, um, will look to take forward. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Stephen. I also apologise and I'm not making Covid an excuse, but Covid did. Uh, give us a kind of pause in activity, as it is said in the report. And communication was sorely lacking and we apologise for that. But the sooner we get round the table to discuss this, I think the better and we will get a meeting organised ASAP. You, I've said that, so there you are. You can come back to me if it doesn't happen, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Claire, any more please?
Um, no more hands raised Chair.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, so if we're happy with that, a meeting as soon as possible, ladies and gentlemen. So we can get going again on the boating lake review. Um, and all the other projects that come under the Arts Advisory Board. Thank you so much. Uh, and moving on then, if I may, um, we're now going on to item six. Granger Progress Report on the west of Waterlooville. You should all have a copy, ladies and gentlemen. And also I'm going to ask David afterwards because, um. We've got one from Taylor Wimpy as well, which I would ask David if he would be so kind later. To bring to the attention of the forum. Um, councillor Reed, I see your hand raised, sir. Councillor Reed, did you wish to come in here?
Meet microphone councillor Reed.
Sorry Chairman, I ca- I can't read my minutes and this screen at the same time, which is a problem. Because I want to draw your attention to two point two and two point three. Two point three tells us we have three hundred and ninety nine thousand pounds approximately still to be utilised. Within this, the arts panel. However, this is determined upon the build outs, five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand, et cetera. Where do we stand on that particular, um, scale at the moment, please?
Hang on councillor Reed, I'm just going two point two, yeah.
Two point nine.
Three, the sum remaining.
Yeah.
stands at three hundred and ninety eight thousand. Um, Steve, are you still there?
Yeah, I am still here.
Did you, did you pick up on councillor Reed's question, sir? But the sum remaining to be spent currently stands at three hundred and ninety eight thousand.
Yeah, that, that is the, that's the overall position in terms of. The money which the one O six makes available. So that's not necessarily three hundred and ninety eight thousand, as councillor Reed. Rightly pointed out, that's not necessarily three hundred and ninety eight thousand sat, sat in the council's coffers. Waiting to be spent. Some of that is, is future contributions that, that Granger are due to make in relation to the one O six agreement. Where exactly we're at in terms of that, I don't know whether Ro- I think Rose is with us. Rose, I don't know if you.
Ah, right, Rose, are you there please? Can you come in on this?
I don't know if Rose knows or can remember the answer to where we're at in terms of which contributions have come in. If not, we might have to get back to councillor Reed afterwards.
Yeah, fine. Rose, can you help us out at the moment or?
Uh, bear with me, I'm just trying to see if I can find the information Chair. So as I can, as far as I'm aware. Um, from Granger, we have had approximately. Uh, eleven thousand two hundred, give or take, I believe.
Right, hang on.
Um. I may have to get back to you with formal numbers.
Yeah.
Um, but I believe we've had.
It's the formal numbers that I'm after.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you what, Rose, if councillor Reed is fine with it. Councillor Reed, may Rose get back to you on that, please?
If she would, as soon as possible, please. But I also now draw your attention to eleven point nine, the report. In January two thousand and, uh, two thousand and twenty two, a group of council officers and members from Winchester City Council. Who were those members from Winchester City Council? I knew nothing of this.
Steve, that was.
Yep, so, so that was, that was the members, I believe, who were the, who had been the sitting members on the arts panel.
Yeah, councillor Brooke, councillor Cutler.
Okay, it would have been nice to say that, the, the members of the arts panel.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Chair.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, we'll get back to you then councillor Reed. Rose, if you could do that as soon as possible, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I will do Chair.
You're very kind, thank you. Right, moving on then, items.
Oh, sorry Chair, I've got, I've got one hand raised by councillor Crichton.
Thank you so much. Councillor Crichton.
Yes, apologies for delaying this, but I just wanted to point out that if the money from Granger is being staged in the way that it is. Um, it may well be that whatever projects that we take on, uh, may have to wait for some particular considerable time. Um, because the, um, the boating lake in particular, whatever we do with that. Um, until we've got a substantial amount of money available, we probably couldn't even make a start on it. Um, and we have the, uh, we've got the disappointment of the wow pod from those of us who are old enough to remember that particular project. Um, if this project goes ahead, in any form, it has to be successful. So I think the cash flow from the, the development has to be looked at, not just what we've got available now, but when monies are going to be available.
Yeah.
Um, the only good news, of course, is, as you'll hear later on, is that Granger are, appear to be upping the rate of which they're, uh, selling their plots off. Um, which I know has brought for, a number of things forward which we can discuss later. But it's, it's, there is still a, a factor involved there before we make any decisions.
No, you're quite right. And I think councillor Crichton, as I said, the sooner we have this discussion, the better, I think, really. Thank you, sir.
Chair, Chair, just before we disappear from that, um, David has just mentioned the number of applications for sites going forward. Are the numbers based on the overall build or on sites?
Who would like to take that one? Anyone? Steve, I don't think that's your domain, is it? Rose? Yes, or Julie, Mrs Pinnock, Julie Pinnock, yes, perhaps you could answer that. Or Rose, I'm not, well, you know, you're both experienced, so.
Either or, hopefully, I mean, I didn't quite understand what councillor Reed was asking. I, I, I don't know if Rose did.
Well, I think what it is, David just mentioned the number of sites going forward has actually increased. But the, as far as I know, we judge it on the number of built outs rather than the sites going forward. Is that, is that the right way to look at it? Or should we be looking at sites going forward?
I, I think the one O six and the planning permission will normally talk about completions. So I, I think what councillor Crichton was saying was that, you know, that growth, that rate has, has sort of sped up a bit on site, which is good news. Because if they're selling plots, uh, and they're completing, they will count towards our numbers for the one O six. Uh, and that will unlock trigger points at various stages.
Yeah, that's the way I understood it, but I just wanted clarification on that.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Rose, because I know you were at the ready on that one. And thank you councillor Reed, appreciated. Uh, well, I'm going to move on now to item six, Granger Progress Report on the west of Waterlooville. MDA, you should still, you should all have a report that was sent to you. So I'm going to go straight in for. Um. I don't know if I've got an officer introduction on this, but I'm going to go straight in and ask if there's any questions. Regarding the report, ladies and gentlemen.
Councillor Crichton.
Thank you. Councillor Crichton, over to you, sir.
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, one of the things that I alluded to earlier on about the increased growth. Is exemplified by the point in section one of the, the Granger report. Which is to do with the delivery of, of the community centre and the local centre. Um, which they've now given the date of twenty twenty five, which is much earlier than we had, uh, um, considered earlier. So the actual growth rate within the development does appear to be accelerating. Um, and this, this is particularly good news. Um, I know that when the last two phases which are being built by Bloor. Uh, were being tended for, there were some, I think over a dozen building firms actually came in. And I know there is similar interest in the two sections that are being marketed at the moment. Um, and that is a, a, a mark of confidence from the building community, the fact that there is demand for properties. Um, all of the existing phases are now almost complete and I know are being sold. So, uh, I think we can be slightly more optimistic in terms of looking at what's going to happen when. And perhaps we were before the, we had the shutdown pandemic.
Thank you councillor Crichton, yes, agreed.
Uh, can, one other point if I can make, uh, in that report, in the absence of anybody from Granger. Um, the reference to the northern allotments. Um, uh, we've been in contact with Granger. Um, councillor Berry may wish to make a comment on this as well, because it came before the highways committee. And we have been asked to submit comments to Granger in terms of the design for those allotments which we have done. Um, the account, the recommendation from the highways and general purchase committee to full council, which will take place on Thursday. Is that we will actually manage the allotments ourselves as a parish council rather than, uh, tendering them out. And we'll be looking at the suitable process for doing that. Um, so again, this is good news in terms of what we're, uh, going to be able to, uh, offer to residents and others in the area.
I think allotments also are more popular than I think they were ever, uh, David. So, oh, right, so you're going to manage them, the PC?
That's, that is the, that's the recommendation. It's subject to agreement with full council, but that's the recommendation from the highways.
Fine, lovely. Thank you, David. Any more questions please regarding the report?
Yes, if I may.
Yeah, if you may, come in.
Yeah, it's Mike here. Um, the very first item on the, um. Bullwood, Beowood thing is the sports pavilion and town centre phase two.
Yeah.
Um, town park phase two rather. These applications have been in for some considerable time. Where are we with regards to? This joint planning committee in order to determine these applications?
Thank you councillor Reed. Uh, Julie, can you answer that one, please?
Chair, we might come to Rose actually for an update on the status of those applications, if that's okay?
Fine, thank you very much, Rose.
Thank you Chair. Um, at the moment, we have some difficulties in regard to the public rights of way. And so we're trying to get those sorted as fast as we can. And we're also waiting for some, um, additional information regarding contaminated land. So until we have those, it's not possible to get the application, um, recommended one way or another.
Thank you, Rose. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, thank you. There are also two other applications which are in for development again. Need to go to the, um, joint planning committee. Where are those in the pipeline, please?
So, uh, is this in regard to the two Bloor applications, five A and three B?
I think it is, yes.
Yeah, so we received some additional information, I believe, last week and we re-advertised that for fourteen days. Um, so once that's finished, we'll be in a better, I, um, we'll be in a better position to form a view at that point.
Okay, but no idea when the planning meeting will take place?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Reed, thank you, Rose. Um, anybody else? Claire?
I think Lewis would like to say something.
Oh, yes, certainly. Lewis, did you wish to speak?
Um, I was just adding to what Rose said in terms of, we've got a joint application phase three B, which is Bloor. Um, so it's just repeating what, uh, Rose just said. Um, and as I understood, they're likely to be delegated decisions from, from Havens' point of view. Um, but that's all I wanted to add there, really on that.
Oh, well, that's kind, appreciated with that. Uh, councillor. You want to come back on that?
Chair.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, if you want to come back, yes.
Uh, all major applications to do with the MDA were supposed to go through the. Um, joint planning committee, otherwise, I know some want to get rid of the joint planning committee, but, uh. At the point in time, this is a development which is split between two district authorities.
I, I'm going to, uh, query that, Julie, uh, Mrs Pinnock, um. Is that the case, please? Or can it go to delegated decision?
Yeah, thank you Chair. At this stage, uh, the, as, as Lewis has said, that. The applications, I believe, don't trigger a referral to a committee for decision. And therefore both councils can make delegated decisions. And I've certainly discussed that with the Chair of our planning committee, who is the Chair of the joint committee. And she's satisfied with that. At the mo- you know, they are up to consultation again. So we, we, we're not in a position at this stage to make a recommendation or decide how to proceed. But when we do so, we'll do so in accordance with the both councils' schemes of delegation, Chair.
Okay, very much.
Thank you Chair. As a member, I'm not terribly happy with that idea. This is a joint project and it should be shown to be joint. Thank you.
Thank you. We will note that councillor Reed, thank you so much. Um, Claire?
Yes, councillor Robinson.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, Julie, go on.
I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to overtalk anyone. I was just going to say, we do, you know, we work very closely and you've got Lewis here tonight and we've had apologies from Steve Weaver. But we do work, you know, as officers very closely in partnership on, on, when we're twin tracking applications, when they straddle. Or when they're in just, you know, our part of the district or in, um, Havens' part of the district. I would just want to reassure members that we are working in partnership to accommodate and this forum is part of that, et cetera. So, you know, just wanted to give the forum that reassurance, Chair.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I do realise that you work in partnership, but I, I will have councillor Reed's. Uh, concerns noted in the minutes. Thank you so much. Yes, Claire, who was next?
Um, councillor Robinson.
Thank you councillor Robinson.
Um, yes, thank you Chair. Um, there was just something in the Granger, um, up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. There was just something in the Granger update that I just wanted to ask whether someone could give me some information on. And it, and it's a statement that the abrupt lack of a community officer in post has meant some previously planned events will not take place. So I didn't quite understand the, the phrase, the abrupt lack of a community officer. If that could be explained to me. And also, is that to say there is no community officer? And if so, is there an intention to re-employ somebody as a community officer?
Thank you. Steve, did you want to come in on that?
I'll do my best to, Chair. Obviously, it's Granger's report, so it's a little hard for me. I'm, I'm having to kind of try and, try and interpret their words in the same way that members are. What I think did happen is the agreement for the community worker in agreement with Granger, because Granger now, I think members will all be aware that Jenny Upstee is now in post working for Granger full-time as Community Development Manager. And, and as her, as per her report, there's, you know, a lot of work being done there. So the, the funded post is now reduced to one day a week, which was agreed in, in sort of, in consultation with the officers at Havant in the community team there who managed that post. They had an identified officer within the team who was going to, going to do that, that one day a week in addition to their normal role. Unfortunately, I believe her personal circumstances changed, which meant that that just wasn't something that was, she was able to do in terms of taking on those additional hours. And colleagues at Havant have, are currently in a position where they don't have anybody within the team who has the sort of capacity and ability to take on that additional, that additional work. So, so I think the term abrupt was because that all happened at quite short notice. So there was an intention for that person to take on those hours, and at relatively short notice, they had to change those plans. And I think that's where the reference to the abrupt came from. So I think there's still conversations ongoing with colleagues in the community team at Havant as to, as to what, what, how, how that can best be undertaken.
Could I, could I just have a supplementary, please?
Yes, sure, ma'am, yes.
So, and you might need to explain this to me, though, Steve. The MDA is predominantly, it's, it's a Winchester, you know, Winchester, the homes, it sits within Winchester. So why are we using a HBC officer?
The reason that was done, and that's been going on now, and I'm trying, I'd be guessing, but it's probably five or six years that that arrangement's been in place. It was basically because, obviously, physically, the development is far closer to, to the sort of, the base of operations for the Havant team than it is for the Winchester team. So, so there was a view going back those, those number of years that it was, it was, it was a very effective and efficient way to do it was for that person, that paid, that paid post to sit within the Havant team, to link with their, the other Havant community officers working in some of the other Waterlooville neighbourhoods, so they sort of collaborate, work together, a bit of resilience, you know, amongst that team of officers in the event of absence, whether it be leave, sickness or whatever. So they could function well as a team, and that would, that would tie that work together. Just to be really clear, that work that's been undertaken on, on the development, that is paid for by the developer and has been for those years. So that's not been, that's not been taking capacity away from the Havant team. That's been additional capacity that was, was put in within the Havant team through the funding from the developer. It was just felt that that was the most effective and efficient way to, to deliver the work, rather than obviously, you know, we're based some, some miles away up, up in the base at Winchester, and that was just felt like the connections there would, would make for sort of solid community work. Hope that explains.
Yeah, no, that, that really does. Thank you. That just brings me to the, the next bit. I'm really sorry about this.
No, don't apologise, please.
As, as the development, because there's still quite a few phases to go. So surely, you know, there's, there's going to need to be more hours. And I presume the developer will pay those hours and increase the days, will they? Because as it grows, I mean, it's a huge site, isn't it?
The, the original 106 agreement set out the terms of the community worker post, and it was for a fixed period of time. So I think the nature of some of what happened in the early stages of the development, where, where obviously the development started, going back, and one or two people who know it better than me may, may sort of pick me up and correct me on some of this. But in broad terms, as I understand it, obviously, the Taylor-Wimpy part of the development started, and that triggered the start of the community worker post. And then there was a bit of a delay in the Granger sort of bit starting. I think there was some remodelling of the outline master plan, which meant that the Granger bit didn't start as early as it was first thought it was going to. So, so what happened is the funding that was there for the post was for a fixed period of time. So, so that funding is now coming to an end. So although there is still a substantial part of the development to, to be undertaken, the funding that comes through the 106 for the community worker is coming to an end. It's always, in terms of these sorts of posts, actually, I have to say, this, this was a a very substantial commitment made to that community work in the 106 agreement. It was a substantial amount of money for, for a post to continue work for quite a good length of time. The idea being that that work doesn't necessarily, that there doesn't necessarily need to be a paid community worker for the whole length of the development. Obviously, in the early stages, it's really sitting there to try and help establish some of those soft networks and the soft, the soft sort of social infrastructure. Lots, lots of that stuff is in place now. Obviously, we have a parish council in place. Lots of the, the building blocks of a solid community are in place now. And, and as with all established communities, at some point, you know, it becomes something which is kind of self-sustaining through, through kind of core activity of parish council, volunteers, social networks and all those sorts of things. So, so that's why the, the paid community worker was only ever a time-limited post. Yeah, and that, and that's kind of where we're at now.
Okay, thank you ever so much. Thank you, Chair.
You're very welcome. Councillor Reed, I know you're desperate, but I think councillor Crichton might have picked you to the post. So councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just to kind of remind members, and those who are perhaps newer to the project than some of us who have been around for the nearly 20 years this has been going on for now, that there were two officer posts that were involved in this, and it's important to remember. What's been said about the community workers are absolutely correct, because that work, part of it will come over now the parish council has been set up. Bearing in mind that technically our responsibility is to the Winchester part, and there is a substantial part of the development in Havant. And in fact, one complete phase that will be entirely in Havant when it's built down on the London Road. But there's also the question of the section 106 implementation officer. And those of us who remember back will know that we started off with a very effective officer in place. And it's no criticism of Granger, and particularly of Jenny, who's doing an excellent job as the community officer. But the section 106 implementation officer's role was that of an independent person, not part of the developer team. And was, the intention was to keep an eye on the development to go through, to make sure that it was done in accordance with what had been agreed, both in terms of the planning and in the individual sections. That post has petered out completely. And it, we've, we have raised this as an issue on a number of occasions. And given the fact that there are maybe 10 to 15 years of work left within the Granger part of this, we feel that that is quite a, a serious handicap in terms of our ability to monitor what the developers are doing. So I'd really like, particularly Winchester City Council, to look at this, because, as I say, most of the development is there. But bearing in mind the fact, as this forum meeting is taking place, that we do have involvement from Havant. It's of interest to both of us, both authorities, to make sure this is followed. And I really would like to see whether there's any possibility that the council will consider how we can effectively monitor the development independently, rather than simply leaving it to the developers to decide what's going on.
Councillor Crichton, I think, Mrs Pinnock. Julie, I think you'd like to come in on this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, just to, the, the section 106 funding for the implementation officer expired, it finished, there was a various trigger points, and there's no more money in that pot, I'm afraid, for us to appoint an officer within our, our team to do that work, paid for by the developer. As you say, we've had an original officer that was with us for some time, and we've had a number of other officers since then, while the funding was still available. What I've done instead is I've brought Rose Lister onto the team as a principal planning officer, and she's obviously here today. We are the local planning authority for Winchester's part of the district. You've got Lewis Oliver here, who's the principal, the team officer for Havant. And we will, where we, what we'll do is we'll do that work on behalf of the local planning authority in our statutory role. But it's not quite the same role as 100% dedicated officer funded by a developer. And I think that's just an important point to note, Chair. But yes, as a local LPA, Rose Lister is the principal planning officer. That's why she's here, and she's been coming to a couple of these meetings, sort of sitting in the background, listening and learning the, the characters, and obviously she's been engaging with the developers. And Lewis, who many of you might know, worked at Winchester for some time before moving to Havant. So, you know, there's a lot of continuity there, Chair, in terms of our, our officer team.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Lewis, did you want to say anything on that?
Yeah, can I just add to what Julie said? We also have Louise Weaver, who's our SIL officer, who is very hot in terms of triggers, I have to say. And I know she works closely with our colleagues in, in Winchester, and my former colleagues at Winchester. So I just wanted to reassure councillor Crichton on that point as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciated. All right, David?
Yes, thank you. I'd simply ask then to make sure that, that the parish council will be quite happy to liaise with the officers concerned. You know, we want to see the development go ahead on, on, as it should be doing and as it is at the moment. So it's nice to know who to contact. And thanks for that information.
Yeah, thank you, David. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. Just really, Steve alluded to it, the fact that in 2008, 2009, which was the start of the economic problem within the UK, Granger's closed site for a good 18 months. So this is why everything has drifted backwards. But I, I agree with councillor Crichton. There is a concern that across the board, we've got to have a uniformed 106 policy that gains for the community and not split it into two authorities, one, in a sense, fighting the other.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Do I have any more, Claire, at the moment?
No more hands raised, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So David, may I ask you to do the Taylor-Wimpy update from Kevin Mitchell? I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My apologies to members, the fact that the report from Kevin Mitchell only came in to me today. I'm, I'm in regular contact with him, and I've actually spoken to him again today. I forwarded the, the email with the details to Claire and to yourself, and I would ask you to then forward them to members, apologies, so you've got a record of it. But if I can just go through one or two of the points, if members will allow that.
Oh, David, did members get, was it forwarded to more members?
No, I, no, no, I've only forwarded it to you and to Claire. So I'll leave you to forward it to others.
Passes on, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. There are, there are, there are a couple of areas where things are happening and some things are not happening. As you know, Taylor-Wimpy are concentrating mainly on the adoption of the spine roads through the development, from the Hampaldon Road traffic lights down to the bridge over to Proxmo Park and to the recycling centre. And we had hoped to have that first piece of adoption done some time ago. It's getting closer to adoption, but there are two problems which Taylor-Wimpy have at the moment, which appear to be with Winchester's legal department. One of them is to do with diversion of an overhead power cable through the industrial development, which has been agreed, the work will be done, but there is a holdup in the agreement on the easement for transferring the overhead cable to an under, underground one, which is necessary before the final bit of industrial land can be developed. But more urgently at the moment, as far as the road adoption is concerned, there are two problems that have come up. One is to do with the signing of the section 104 agreement and the sewer and water easement agreement, to which Taylor-Wimpy are ready to sign, Southern Water are ready to sign, but for some reason which nobody seems to understand, Winchester's legal department is not. And that needs to be addressed as soon as possible so that that can go ahead. There is another factor which doesn't affect Winchester, and that is to do with the fact that before the section of road can be adopted, there are a couple of, two or three lighting columns that have to be worked on. The problem is that the first phase of the development of Wellington Park preceded the PFI agreement, which replaced all the lamp standards across Hampshire. And a number of the posts in the earlier part have still got the old sodium heads on them, and those are no longer available for replacement. And Taylor-Wimpy has been having some difficulty, even though they've agreed to pay for them, to get the, the new type heads installed. We think we've got a solution to it, but that is also holding up progress. Once those have been agreed, and there is a final surfacing to be put on the cycle path, which is otherwise complete, plus an agreement from Taylor-Wimpy, which I had confirmed today, for a proper entrance to the end of the greenway off Darnall Road by the substation, where a dropped curb and entrance has got to be put in. All that work will be done. Hopefully, we will then get the road adoption done. Once that's done, then Taylor-Wimpy will start on remedial work on the rest of the development, in their part of it. There is another problem which has arisen, which I wasn't aware of until last week in relation to the section 104 agreement with Southern Water. And that is because down on the open space at the bottom of the Taylor-Wimpy development, before you get to the Granger part, there is open space along there, which has not been transferred to anybody because planting was done of trees a couple of years ago without taking into account the easement for Southern Water. And this has been raised as an issue, obviously, because some of the trees have been planted directly over the sewer and water pipelines. That work will be undertaken to, to change it. I've spoken to Lady Coldelli, who is trainee working for Kevin Mitchell, and also to the people from Millstone, who have been given the contracts to do the work as they did originally. And that will be addressed later in the year, when it's a suitable time to replant trees. And hopefully, at that point, the final 104 agreement with Southern Water can be agreed. It shouldn't hold up the road adoption, but it has to be done before the rest of the estate can be taken on. And finally, as far as the work is concerned, some of you will be aware that the Old Park Farm stream, which runs from the Hampaldon Road down through the Taylor-Wimpy estate, and then eventually joins up with the Wallington, it was diverted as part of the development of phase four, which leads to a rather interesting boundary between Havant and Winchester, where the stream used to run. That stream had become very overgrown. It had become full of rubbish. There was problems with it flooding because of the blockage. What's happened now is that Taylor-Wimpy have given a contract to Millstone, and they have now started work. Planting was done, I think it was three years ago, considerable amount of bushes and trees, many of which died because we had a drought after that. And what has happened now is all of the, the dead material has now been stripped away. We have a pretty open area. Millstone are starting this week to bring in a digger to dig out the stream bed, to level it out and remove the rubbish from it, or the vegetation. And once that's done, they will start doing a proper planting on the other side of the stream and a bit less on the house side, but restore it properly. So that, and the reason for doing that is that the, the way that the stream was designed, where it comes down round the estate, and then literally at the point where it crosses over the Winchester-Havant boundary, where there is a little bit of a, not a bottleneck, but a restriction in the, the stream flow. And that was intended to make sure there's a balance between making sure the water levels are kept up in the upper part, there's basically a set of lakes, but don't overflow when there is heavy rain. And that is what this work is intended to do. So hopefully, that will resolve that. And that work will, that work has started now. Other than that, I'll leave members to see the details that have been sent through. And if there are any questions that members have following that, send them back either to myself and I'll pass them on, or to Kevin Mitchell directly at Taylor-Wimpy.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. I've got councillor Berry and councillor Reed. So councillor- So councillor Barry, could I take you first, please?
Yes. Taylor Wimpy, as David knows, the highways section which I chair, we put a lot of health and safety concerns and a lot of photographs of work which should be done to improve the shrubs which are overhanging, weeds, paths which are not right, which are trip hazards and stuff like that. And at our last meeting, there was no feedback from them. On my drive around and looking, the work hasn't still been done. Can we chase up Taylor Wimpy to get this stuff done? Because, you know, we put it, as a parish councillor, we got a duty of care to the residents to make sure that everything is safe and sound and stuff like this. And Taylor Wimpy seems to be ignoring it.
Yep. Don't see why we can't chase them, sir. Thank you. David, did you want to come back on?
Yes, I simply wanted to point out, thanks to councillor Barry for pointing that out. It is the case, he may have missed my comment earlier on amongst the report. What Kevin Mitchell has told me is that they are about to start work on remedial work of the sort he's talking about fairly quickly now, because they have some additional staffing available. He is working on the spine road adoption. His assistant is now starting, and I've spoken to her again today, is going to start looking at the other matters. So councillor Barry is absolutely right, there are a whole series of issues in relation to things like block paving which needs to be replaced, there are lamp posts, some of which have never worked at all, which have got to be done. And all of these will be looked at, because as members should be aware, the intention is that all of the highways and pavements through the development, in fact, everything other than a few internal courtyards will be adopted by the highway authority. And in order for them to take that on, the points that councillor Barry has raised have obviously got to be met.
Yep. Though they'll be replacing, we hope, all the dead and vandalised trees, as I see. And I believe Hampshire County Council are investigating regarding the lighting, David. That's correct, I think?
Yeah, the light standards have all got to be made good at the moment. And also, as I mentioned earlier on, because of the earlier part of the estate having the old sodium heads on, part of that adoption process has got to be replacement of the heads by the new style ones. Now, the other, it's not quite a case of simply putting the new heads on and connecting them up, there's a little bit of work that has to be done with those. And part of the problem, as people may be aware, is that there are a limited number of companies available to do this work. So that has got to be scheduled as part of the development process. I'll simply indicate, the work is indicated as being started. When it'll be completed, I can't give you an answer to at the moment.
They're investigating, I think, yes. Yes. I can see a lovely lady with her hand up. Please, did you want to come in on this part?
Not on this one. I'm really sorry, but I need to go now.
Oh, all right.
I'm really sorry to have to leave early, but I've got another meeting I've got to go to, so.
May I say it was lovely to see you and for your contribution to the forum tonight? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And just before I go, I'd just say, David, I will be in touch, because I'm sure you'll tell me all about the boating lake. Okay, thanks very much, everybody. And good day to councillor Wilson, thank you.
Take care, thank you. Councillor Reed, sir?
Thank you, Chair. What is the update with regard to the B2150 review? This is now three years old?
Yep, well, we contacted councillor Brakes, Hampshire County Council, who is setting up a site visit. And I said, councillor Reed, that there's no point bringing this up tonight or discussing because until the site visit actually takes place, that's what I'd like to wait for. So she's definitely trying to get a site visit for us to go out, sir.
Okay, thank you. The other point was, I think we ought to note that the decision, the decision day yesterday in Winchester, the report on the Western Waterlooville MDA transfer of land to Newlands Parish Council was pulled at the 11th hour.
Yeah.
I've had a very apologetic note from Kelsey Lernie, the portfolio holder, which I've obviously passed on to the parish council. But it does seem a bit concerning that something as simple as this had to go to the last minute to be pulled.
No, I was just going to bring that up, councillor Reed, or before the meeting finished. It's our apologies, but we do need to advertise this as open land. And yes, it's a bit late, sir, but we, and we will need to bring the paper back as soon as possible. But we are still committed, councillor Reed, to transferring the land. But we must give, I'm afraid, the public the opportunity to look and we need to advertise the land appropriately. But we'll bring it back to consider the outcome of the advert as soon as possible. It's because it's open land. But if you stay, hang on, councillor Reed, because Dawn Adey is here and she can inform you far better than I. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, good evening councillors. Before I explain, I also want to apologise to councillor Reed, because you're quite right, it was last minute and that's not really acceptable. It was something that occurred to me on reviewing the papers before they came through. And obviously, we want to get the transaction right to make sure that it is lawful and correct. So I just wanted to apologise to you and I hope to be coming to the parish council meeting on Thursday if I can be accepted there and come and make sure I apologise as well there. The open land transfer does need to be advertised, so I've instructed that this week. The monitoring officers agreed that we can take that through the next two weeks as it needs to be advertised. We'll then consider, it's one of those notices that seeks objections. So we'll then consider the objections through the pre-election period and make sure this decision comes back as quickly as possible after the pre-election period.
Thank you, Dawn, on that one. Yeah, it was a bit disheartening as I turned up to the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
First item had been pulled. So, yeah, I am concerned, this was the reason why all the way along the line, and it was before you arrived, that this should have been a tripartite agreement, not a two-party agreement. We never had this trouble when the land was transferred.
And it would have been exactly, that's exactly the point that was missed on our form, was that if it had been try, we would have been able to transfer it because you would have been named on the 106 and that was the missing link. So you're absolutely right.
Yeah. So I hope as an organisation, we learn from this and become a tripartite agreements.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Where they can, yes.
Yes.
But a big apology, councillor Reed. Councillor Wade, thank you, Dawn. Councillor Wade?
Just to let you know, I'm leaving the meeting now.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, councillor Wade, thank you.
Councillor Crichton?
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to ask in view of what's been said now and what's happened about this problem with the transfer, which I fully understand, because this was a transfer of public land from Winchester City Council outside its boundaries to, even though it was to a subsidiary organisation, the parish council. Can I just ask for confirmation then that if there is a further portion of land in Wellington Park, which is not, which Taylor Wimpy still have, which I mentioned earlier on because of the problem with easements, once that is resolved, Taylor Wimpy intend to transfer that directly to the parish council? And can I just have confirmation that transfer from the development to the parish council does not require any outside advertisement?
Dawn, I'm going to ask you.
If I may, yes, yes, it's a local authority transferring land that requires us to follow the regulation that we're following. So as long as it goes from developer out, it's just a transaction.
That's fine. And given that Winchester's policy, as I know, is that public space is not taken in the future by Winchester, but should go to the parishes, then that would apply to any land coming from Granger, as it were to. So I just wanted to clarify the fact that this is, looks like a one-off problem, this one, rather than things else. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. Councillor Barry, did you have another question?
Councillor Barry?
Yes. Dawn, you'd be quite welcome at Thursday night meeting at the parish council. The other thing is, again, there's a lack of communication between Winchester and all the other bodies and the parish council, not letting councillors know about what's going on. That's all I've got to say.
Yes, yes, yes.
Could I, councillor Claire?
Yeah.
So our team called the parish council within the hour on Monday morning. So we did try, but we, it was, as councillor Reed's explained, it was literally, he'd arrived at the meeting as we were discussing whether the meeting could table that item. It was that short notice, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
So just a quickie, based on what David has already said, regarding this additional parcel of land coming from Taylor Wimpy, presumably that will also attract a commuted sum, which I would assume would be worked out by the city council. Am I correcting that?
Dawn? May I ask, oh, Steve?
I'd rather Steve, if Steve can, thank you.
I've got Steve, thank you.
Only to say, I don't know the specifics of the piece of land in question, but these pieces of land generally all come with a commuted sum. And it would normally be our practice that we would transfer land and commuted sum together as a package, councillor Reed, one wouldn't go without the other. So, yeah, whatever, the city council would do a calculation of how much has been spent in terms of maintaining that piece of land up to the current, to the, well, no, actually, if that was handing over from the developer, it would come with the commuted sum. So we haven't spent any money on that. So, yeah, the two would come together, is the answer to the question, yes.
And would that go through the city council as per norm or would it come direct to the parish council?
I would need to probably refer to legal colleagues in terms of the specific answer, but I would imagine if land was coming direct from developer to parish council, I don't see why the funding wouldn't, the commuted sum fund wouldn't do similar. But I'd want to make sure I was correct in that.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
We'll double check for you, councillor Reed. Thank you. Any more questions regarding the report, please, from Taylor Wimpy, Claire?
No more hands raised, Chair.
Okay, well, if not, I'd like to thank councillor Crichton for doing a good job and updating us on that report. Thank you, sir. And while moving on, ladies and gentlemen, may I just say that the dates of the forum meetings for the 2223 municipal year will be circulated to you all as soon as they've been confirmed. Steve, did you raise your hand or did you wish to speak again? Steve?
It's councillor Crichton does, I think.
Oh, I apologise, I thought I saw Steve Lincoln's hand go up. Councillor Crichton, yes, sir?
Yes, apologies for having to raise this, but I did speak to the officer earlier about the fact that we've dropped from the agenda of these meetings, a session which common to every meeting of the forum way, way back until very recently. And that was an opportunity for the members who were attending to raise items which were not necessarily on the agenda, but were germane to the proceedings, so that they then could be brought up at the next meeting and made aware to other people. And we don't have that at the moment. And that actually includes matters arising from the minutes of the last meeting. And I've got a couple of points that I would like to raise and I'm afraid there's been no opportunity to this point to do so. So if I could beg the indulgence of members, I would like to raise those.
Okay, I will allow you, sir. Carry on, thank you.
And this goes back to the, actually, the report in the minutes of the previous meeting, there were two items in there which are relevant. One is to do with the open space adoption in the Havant part of Wellington Park. And I'm sorry that all the Havant members have had to leave at this point, but just to let members know, that is still an ongoing problem. As you will be aware, Havant agreed that they would, despite their current policy about not adopting open space. Sorry, can everybody see me at the moment? I've got a problem.
Screen's frozen, I think, councillor Crichton.
Yes, now that's interesting. Sorry about that. Am I back on again now?
You're fine now, yes.
Yeah, fine, I've got a new webcam because I had a problem with the previous one. Just as an update on that, I understand that there may be a movement on that at last. Part of the problem was that the officer dealing with it actually was in East Hans. And as you know, Havant and East Hans are in the process of a fairly complex divorce proceedings. And I spoke to councillor Tim Pike, who some of you will know in Havant, who was going to follow this up. And I'm hopeful that that adoption will take place. And that, hopefully by the time of our next meeting, we'll be able to report some progress on it. The other matter that came up on the minutes of the last meeting was to do with policing areas, where you'll be aware that we have raised as a concern with the police and crime commissioner, that the policing of the MDA is split. So that the Havant part is police out of Waterlooville, that the Winchester part is out of Bishop's Waltham, which is some distance away. I've since had a call from the inspector on the Winchester side. And what he's explained, I think, resolves this. Even though the policing is still split, the situation is that non-emergent, non-urgent calls will be attended in the same way by officers either from Bishop's Waltham or from Havant. Sorry if my picture has frozen again, it seems to have indicated that. Can you still hear me okay? Right. Yeah. But any emergencies, which I had forgotten, are handled on a countywide basis. So the fact that there is a split policing doesn't make any difference to that at all. So I think we're quite satisfied with the response we've had on that.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, most kind. Yes, that was raised by inspector John Turtin, David, at a recent meeting that I attended. So non-urgent calls in the same way, but emergencies, as you so rightly said, are handled differently. But, so I hope that is fine with you, sir. If there are no more questions or queries, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to thank you so much because that actually concludes the formal business for this meeting. And just a big thank you from me for attending and I send my best wishes, as always, to you all. And as I said, the dates for the next forum meetings for the 2223 municipal year will be circulated to you all as soon as they've been confirmed. But thank you so much for your attendance and good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bye bye.